Yeah.
Are you serious?
Christmas?
Yeah. Christmas is out there.
So we brought up, I'm like, I didn't really write anything up because I wanted to have the conversation with everyone before we drafted too much up.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. So we kind of in our couple of work sessions that we met on, we kind of broke it down. So we looked at other cities, broke it down to the five, six things that were talked about in every code. And that was density, design, landscaping, affordability, and then open space or amenities. So that's kind of how we channeled our discussion on the things that we went off of. And then we kind of just bounced it back off of what other cities had and how we felt about things. So I think the easiest part is just to start going down that list and start a discussion. Unless you guys have other input or things you want to say to begin with. Okay. So the first thing we went into was permitted areas in the city. And we originally, because a lot of the cities especially was at Plain City. I think it was either Plain City or Mary Slaughterville. They had just certain areas that were targeted for this. And I don't know if there was a true reason. I think it just helped them keep the zone minimal. Or to not have a lot of them or someone to start coming in with them.
Well, one thing you don't want is you don't want somebody to come in and put 10 acres of these in and then another 10 acres and then another 10 acres. That's really not the intent, right? Did we ever put a total acreage limit?
No, we didn't. So we-
No, no, I'd be as worried about that. My biggest thing is, is I would prefer to see language that made it so, because you know, if we say it's acceptable in any of these areas, then our hands are sometimes tied. Because if they come in and say, we want to do this here, well, we can't say no necessarily because it's allowed. So I'd almost rather see language that gives us that opportunity to say yes or no versus trying to do all those requirements. Like you can't have one next to another or some in the acreage. Because that-
I agree.
Because it seems like whenever it comes before us, it doesn't fit within one of those really restrictive things we've put together. And then we have to find a way to work around it. It's like, oh, it makes sense, but we didn't write the ordinance that way. But I'd almost rather write it so you know, it's like a conditional use, like we have to give approval to put it there.
That was the gist of our discussion.
Yeah.
We couldn't come up with a specific place in the city where we thought it should be. But I think it was the consensus of the commission that clearly this would be, they would propose something and we would review their proposal.
So could you list that as, this is a conditional use within a residential zone?
Yeah.
The only thing we have to be careful with in that regard is not making it so that we're the judges and creating an arbitrary situation that can then be lobbied and argued.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just trying to think of a way to leave it open.
Yeah.
But then also give us the ability to say, no, that's, that doesn't fit within that area because of traffic or congestion or-
Well, and if you look at the conditional use, it isn't, it isn't a willy nilly, we don't like it. We're obligated to give them specific reasons and you should, you mentioned one of them. And that is it interferes with traffic flow or there's safety issues or something like this. In other words, if we said no, we would have to have a defensible, relevant reason why we're saying no. It couldn't be, I don't like that. So that's why I think a conditional use would be probably good language.
I agree. And people like to use traffic and I'm an engineer and I understand that that's very poor. I hear those and it's very poor reasoning all the time. Because you're like, well, 20 years ago, there was only one road. Now we have, you know, it's, you can make it work.
Or using it and saying, well, traffic in 10 years will be, like, that's a hard reason too.
I just don't like the, you have to have a minimum of this size, or it has to be this, or it has to be that. It just seems like every time we try to put that together, those kind of restrictions don't make sense.
When I, when I've talked to some of the developers who are actually looking into this, they were asking for about three to five acres.
But, so I, like I say, I-
It comes back to what I got in that training session. And that is, if you're going to set a restriction, you better have some justification for your, for your restriction. Otherwise, you're on real thin ice. So.
I don't, I have a hard time with the conditional use because then sometime, like we, and just simply because it's sensitive right now, because we've ran into it quite a bit. But how would that happen? Because we'd almost need, like, what kind of conditions would you foresee?
Usually you don't put conditional use on a zoning.
Right. And it would be hard to know before you get far down.
Using as an example.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It would almost be like this, you know, in any residential zone, this, this zoning would be allowed. Or I don't know, if you say, in R115, you can get a, I mean, I don't know how you write that into zoning.
Flip the, flip the question around. Instead of restricting it to an area, why don't you state the conditions where you don't want it to be? You understand what I'm saying? So you're not saying area A, B, or Z. You're simply saying that these are, these are conditions, these are situations where we would not like to see this.
And what would those be? What's something you could think of?
The point, I'm raising that curb specifically.
What are they?
If you can't come up with anything, I think we've just answered our question.
No, I agree. I really don't see this being that big of an issue. I mean, they're residential. They're usually not massive developments. They're smaller developments. They're not high congestion traffic. I mean, I'm not saying I see these as a problem.
I think your worries will be picked up mostly in a development agreement, that there are some things there.
Like I say, I just think that, I want to leave it open so that we're not-
I agree with that.
Creating all these stipulations that then just are, we're always trying to work around. Because we've caught ourselves on that side of the fence as well.
I agree.
You're somewhere between, you want to be flexible enough to allow good things to happen, but they also say things need to be very clear.
I just don't want our hands completely tied.
Well, and I don't want to see us say, okay, well, the minimum or the maximum's eight acres and this guy have eight and a half acres. And all of a sudden, like, yeah, it's stupid.
It makes total sense where they want to put it, but we're-
Right.
We're happy to redo the ordinance just for them.
And I think Liam would steer us away from the conditional use idea.
And I hate to make an arbitrary decision that's arbitrary.
Right.
We end up disagreeing with ourselves when they come in with a good proposal. So who thought of this?
Maybe this, like I say, maybe we don't do anything now, but, but maybe it's just it's limited to current residential zones. Because this would be its own-
Yep, zone.
Residential zone, alright.
I can see it in mixed use as well.
That's true.
I like the idea of restricting it so that we don't have 30 acres of patio homes in one development.
But I guess the question, would you-
Well, that would be a restriction within.
30 acres.
I've seen some things happen that I never thought would. So I don't know.
30 acres is a big chunk.
Well, you look at Sun City, right? You have Sun Cities in Vegas and Phoenix.
Well, and you look too, especially if they're going to phase it. And all of a sudden, they've got four phases and it's 100 patio homes. I think you're right. I don't think we'll see it, but doesn't mean that- 238 homes.
That's why, just language enough that doesn't necessarily need to say, we don't want a 30 acre development. But how do we restrict it enough that we get to approve how big it is and where, you know, it is without-
Legacy is a good example because even, right, it's a, it's a beautiful community, even though it is 200 homes. But same thing, it was four phases. So, I don't know.
One, what would stop somebody from creating one of these and then somebody else coming in and putting one right next to it?
That's the same.
And next to it. And you look at the church farm and, you know, there's probably 15 to 20 of these, one at a time situations.
The thing that's going to stop them is there aren't going to be enough people to buy them. They're going to want some, they're going to want some-
If you can truly restrict to that.
But you're talking about two issues. The first one was where in the city, this is how big of a parcel.
Right.
Which aren't the same question.
Yeah, sorry, we sidetracked.
And so, well, no, I don't think that's sidetracked. I mean, I think we said, as far as an area within the city, let's just see what happens. But a separate question is, do you want to restrict how large of a development it could be?
Well-
What you just mentioned.
Yeah. But like I say, like she says, you say eight and you give me a half, I mean, I-
Well, aim high though. I mean, you, you, there's at some point at which you just wouldn't want it to happen. I don't think you're talking five acres. But when you started mentioning 30, I would have some serious heartburn of anything over-
But what happens if you get 30 and they've decided that 40% of that is amenities for these people? You know, there's pickleball courts or, you know, things that they've decided to give back to the residents to allure them to their community. And all of a sudden, really, the housing, is it based on true housing number instead of actual acreage?
That would fit into those green spaces or common spaces anyway.
Right.
The way that we would, I, I would see any of these zones written, it would already fit into there. So.
But I'm saying if they had 40 acres and, you know, 15 to 20 of those acres were open space and really they're only putting homes on 20 acres. Right, like a- Then they can do-
That might be the better thing, is to limit the number of dwelling units in the development.
We are kind of doing that too, yoked up with acreage.
Well, but no, but, but it, it, there's a different, we're, we're, we're going to limit density. But unless you combine that with acreage, you haven't limited the number of development dwelling units.
So I guess the question would be, I mean, we talked about this would be a very similar, you know, you would have a development agreement on this. Because we were, you know, back when we were looking at that high density, we were, we were shifting focus back to this. We weren't going to try to prescribe everything and make it more of a development agreement. I mean, how restrictive can we get with that process? Like, these will be allowed, but it's, I mean, it's a very restrictive process and to work with the city on a developer's agreement of what's allowed, not allowed, without getting way overboard on all the-
To increase the green space with, when you get to a certain number of units?
Yeah, but like I say, I just think that would be better just as a negotiation versus the-
Well, a lot of that is just how it comes in as a concept, which starts the discussion. And then you have the discussion, but you don't really have much to say, well, why can't we have that? Or, or pushback. You don't have much rules.
How much clout do you have in a development agreement?
Well, it's enforceable.
Pardon?
It's enforceable.
It's enforceable.
But I don't know how much clout you have to put the rules in.
When push gets to show, when they come before the planning commission, the city council.
You have to have a good reason.
Strong can you, how compelling is your argument?
It's good. It's strong.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's basically, we'll keep talking until we're happy.
Yep, exactly. Both parties, both parties have to agree.
But I think-
And we agree.
I think you have to be strong upfront, saying, hey, these are only allowed under certain, I mean, if you kind of say, yeah, we want them, we want them, then you lose your negotiation. But if you pretty much say, you have to meet certain criteria, we'll let you even present it to us, then it gets you, you want to be on that side of it.
Which would be specified in a document like this, the criteria that you're talking about.
Well, I think that's where we still have to have basic requirements because then you open the door to everything.
But I think as far as like the size, I mean, I don't think I have a problem with requirements like frontage and setbacks and density and those. But I think as far as the location and the size, I think that could be more governed on those kind of grounds.
I agree with that.
Question, what if we make adjustments to the general plan, which allows these type of developments in certain areas? Wouldn't that kind of give us a little bit of leverage and?
Well, the problem is, is what happens when someone requests it outside of one of those areas and it makes sense.
And you can negotiate updating the general plan to allow it in that location.
And-
And I don't like that. Because I don't think there's a true area in the city that we don't-
From exhaustion.
No, that's where I am too. It's always seems like-
So I'm not really anxious to jump in to revise the general plan again.
Just a thought. So.
But I mean, that, that's a mechanism that can be used.
Okay, so I think we can agree on-
This is our dream, but-
Right. I think we can agree that the size and density isn't as important about, as the rest of the stuff we're going to talk about.
I would just-
Let's leave that where it is for now.
Just a brainstorm and see how we can do that.
And then the development agreement. Okay, open space. We had a tough one on this one because, I mean, it's just really depending on the, I don't know, just kind of an arbitrary number. We just chose 15. It felt like it was the most universal on the cities that we looked at. But we really didn't get a feel. I feel like most of these will have more than 15% open space. But we, we're welcome to input on this one because we really didn't know.
When I went to Tor Green Farm down there, they counted like open space, but I didn't see much of it anywhere. I wandered those streets and-
Some of it is just trails that wander between all the homes that you would never see unless you're on.
And a lot of-
That big gravel thing in front with the bushes.
What they're counting is, so those homes are footprints usually. So they're counting all the common space around those yards, which counts into their percentage.
There's not a lot of common space without those yards.
I mean, I think if that's, if you say that's a minimum, and it's kind of what you've seen typical, I don't-
And it was kind of standard with the rest of our residential ordinances.
Part of these with those is they aren't looking for big massive yards and a lot of HOA payments. I mean, that's kind of why they're in these developments. So I don't want to start creating something that's-
And the difference on this one too, with it being them having their own lot, that it allowed the open space to be really usable open space, not counting the back of their yards or the front of their yards or things like that. It was actually something that wasn't attached to their home. So it was more parks or-
Like a common space.
Yeah. Yeah. So we felt like it was a little bit more usable and didn't think it needed to be much above 15. So. Okay, lot sizes, we just went for, so the hardest one, we feel pretty good about the setbacks, but lot frontage was the hardest one we had. Because our current, our 15 is 100 foot frontage, which is very large for most cities. So we kind of stuck in between 55 to 80. I think by the time we were done with our discussion, it was more like 60 to 80 feet. 80 feet's a big lot.
I was going to say, if you want to get anywhere close to the five units per acre density, it'd be more like 50. 50, 55 would be kind of the max, I think, but-
50 leaves you for, if we have five foot setbacks, that's a 45 foot home, max, which is hard when we started talking about three car garage.
When we started playing with the setbacks, you know, you consider all the setbacks and then the lot size, and then that translates to how big the footprint is for the house.
All of these single, like, they're not duplex, they're not-
No, not attached. Yeah, not, not.
Are any of the ones in Plain City attached?
No, I don't think so. But West Haven has attached ones.
The Plain City one, or not the Plain City, the-
North Ogden has some attached too. It was like four plaques.
I think that gets out of the definition of a patio home though. And then you're moving into a town.
Yeah, you're, you're a different animal altogether.
Stick with the patio home.
Yeah, then the density gets real funky because-
I personally think that your setbacks kind of help you decide the size of the lot because-
Well, but that's where with, I still think it's important on the five and five for the side setbacks.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can put down on that.
I feel like 50 foot front, I mean, 50 foot front is small.
Five and five.
If you want, I'm just saying if you want any density near five units per acre, it has to be in that range.
Then you end up with, yeah, that's true.
The setbacks will determine the size, it will help determine the size of your homes and your lots. Because they will fill them up no matter, you know, whatever the size of any of that is, they'll go to them.
55. I just, and I guess you, the, the developer's going to change anyways. He's going to do a 60 or 65 if he wants three cars on him.
Want how it lays out and everything, yeah.
I mean, I, I just want everyone to be aware and not upset when we end up with a 55 foot lot and we have 40 foot frontage, or 40 foot homes.
This is the minimum too, not the max. So.
Right. I'm fine with 55.
But I think to your point, you know, if the customer wants a three car garage or even a normal sized two car garage, then it's going to be wider. Yeah, I think, I think the conditions will dictate the size at that point, as long as they don't break the minimums.
I agree. I'm fine with 45. Sorry, oof. I'm thinking house, I'm, I'm thinking detached townhome in my head is what I'm thinking. 55.
Do we actually have to say frontage width?
Yes, well-
As the minimum.
Yeah.
Minimum, okay. Minimum.
Yeah. Because then it leaves a lot open discussion if you don't even have a starter of how big it is.
Right, other than your setbacks.
Well, yes, but not, yeah. It's easier to start with at least knowing what the frontage is.
The interesting thing is, we're not telling them how big the house can be, but we are telling them how big the house can be.
Right.
But we're, we're coming in the back door, but that was some of the intent of this.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They will build to those setbacks.
Yeah. Well, I know that, but we didn't want to have a monster house on a small lot. So you could start with a small lot and crunch it in with setbacks. And that has to be a smaller home.
To have footprint minimums. Where you have to have at least 1,200 square feet on the main level or something to make it within. But then we talked when we started talking about square footage, is then you miss, sometimes miss the mark on affordability. And all of a sudden, you're 100 square feet off of what, you know, I don't know, you kind of bite yourself in the foot.
Are you in agreement with that?
All of our other ones.
So it was a backdoor approach. We wanted to have some influence on the house size, but we did it indirectly. Through lot size and setbacks.
They have to be single level too. So I guess that eliminates that right there.
Yeah, we set the ceiling.
Yeah. So that counts. Okay, five and five side setbacks, fine. 20 foot front setbacks, at least you can park a car.
But you're to argue your question from where? So if this is-
Oh yeah, that was what we needed to talk about.
Property line, that's the-
And remind me, property line is a foot behind sidewalk? Or is property, yeah, property line is a foot behind sidewalk, right?
What's that?
Is property line a foot behind sidewalk? Are we going to property line that's-
It's nine feet back of curb.
Okay.
So if the sidewalk gets, it's usually, yes, you're right, it's usually a foot behind sidewalk. So if this, if we're going to allow for any PUDs, meaning non-dedicated roads to the city, then we would want to change that. Then we would definitely go to back of curb, right? So it's really just up to what we're in.
Why?
Um, because it's not a, it's not a city maintained road at that point. And technically, they own everything. There is no property.
Then their property line goes to curb.
It goes to the street. It's a, it's a private street. So, so that's why I'm saying that you could, at that point, dedicate the side, side back as back of curb, like literally to the back of the curb. But-
We could have two things. One, that's if the roads are maintain, are publicly maintained, this, or dedicated this. And if they're not dedicated, then it's back of curb.
You got it with that.
Because that makes it cleaner, because we got a little bogged down with what happens if this doesn't have sidewalks? What happens if something runs and there isn't a sidewalk and their property line is now, you know, back of curb and it's a public road and now they're really truly 20 feet off the road.
Yeah, curb's always the best to use because sometimes sidewalks even get placed in the wrong spot.
Right. Or they don't have a park strip in between, or you widen the sidewalk, or, okay. I like that.
But that's part of my concern too with the length of vehicles. You park a truck on it.
Yeah, do you need a-
You don't want to go on the sidewalk.
So, so I don't agree with farming, a bunch of trucks where their tails are hanging over sidewalks.
But if you have 20 feet after the property line, that's really 29, almost 30 feet. Right, that's different.
Are you doing two different?
You could do like 25 if it's back of curb. If it's not, if it's a not dedicated road, you could do 25. Or you could adjust, you could write it somehow so it's adjusted per the development agreement depending on the site plan at that point.
Most of these communities usually state that there's no parking in the driveways. I know it's hard to enforce, but most of them state that. So I don't know. I mean, again, I'm thinking about the consumer of this product. It's, they're not typically driving the, the biggest, longest trucks anymore.
You know, you have cars in the park.
Parking on the streets and it's just a disaster.
Yeah. But that could be a discussion item too, because a lot of those HOAs will take care of that too, to say, you know, no parking on the street or no parking hanging into the sidewalk or-
Usually becomes governed by the HOA at that point.
Maybe just say property line, keep it simple. Either way, just keep it simple.
But then if the property line is back of curb, then it still doesn't solve your problem.
But that's just, that was just one of my themes. So it's-
What would be the problem of adding some extra distance if it's back of curb?
Taking it 25.
Because they, then you'd make them more comparable, the distance from, I think what you should aim for is the distance from street.
The property line isn't always, sometimes it's not always that.
You know, it's a street or not. What's, what would be the difference? Is five feet with five feet covered?
Sorry, what?
Typically, yes.
Maybe 25 foot?
Yeah, I'm saying 25 from back of curb or 20 from property line.
That would cover either way and you don't care if there's sidewalks.
That's, that's my point, is work stated both ways. And then they'll all look essentially the same whether you're on a city street or a private street. Wouldn't, would that be what you'd want to have and not have some?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Don't just do one measurement from back of curb and don't, like, just, that's the measurement.
25, it's not a curb no matter what. It's going to, it'll work.
That's fine.
Round the property line.
Yeah.
With the curb as a move.
So do you do something like 25? You almost have to like-
25 from back of curb.
We're going to go with that approach. We've got to go to 29. Because it's going to be nine feet back of curb.
Always going to be nine feet? Okay.
Unless they don't have the park strip.
Only thing I'm going to throw out here is the new LOD requirements. They're not even requiring curb, because we're requiring that they have that drainage on the property, which throws a lot of hiccups and a lot of that stuff.
You're saying there might not be a curb?
Might not be. Well, then I guess curb would just be edge of road. But the drainage now is in the frontage.
Like the swells and things like that? Oh gosh.
So.
But wouldn't we still want-
But I think curb, I mean, normally they'd have like a concrete strip down the sides. I think if you're designating that as your curb, then you're still back from that, then they've still got to do your drainage. So I think those would get really tough in an area like this. But, so I think either way, you're probably still covered.
So do we just say 29 from, from, from street?
I was going to say, I would say 32.
You get to 29, everyone's like, where'd you come up with that number?
30.
But again, we're talking to street.
Well, but I think, but I think even if we do that, I mean.
Well, then do you go street or do you go right of way line? Because then street could, to me, isn't a very good word.
I know. And the problem I have with this is that, again, we're, we're talking patio homes. This creates a lot of front yard space.
Yeah.
What these people don't want, nor do the developments that are talking.
And we already make it create a big enough lot because our density is a little bit higher than normal anyways. So they're going to end up with-
The only reason we're trying to go beyond the 20 is because we're worried about a big old truck parking in there.
Or just like a normal car, what, 14 feet?
How people don't use their garages anymore and they fill it up and now everybody- So down in Green Farm, I went down there, I probably saw 10 trucks with their tails hanging over the sidewalk, right up against the garage door.
Well, I mean, some of-
Hanging over the sidewalk.
I mean, because some of these, don't they, I'm trying to remember, is it pleasant view? Like, some of them you have, like, like all of the driveways are in the back. And then the houses are in the front. I mean, we've got to think of these different layouts.
Like a rear entry, rear load.
So that everything on the front stays nice and all the driveways are back in a circle. So.
Yep.
I mean, you've got a lot of different scenarios. So I think if we're worried just about driveway and frontage, I think the difference needs to be is, I think frontage could stay at 20 feet, 15 feet or whatever, and then you do another minimum dimension on drives. Minimum dimension on drives.
That's, I like that, I like that, yes.
So then maybe what, their, their garage has to be set back instead of the home.
On the back or something.
Forward.
That way the frontage could be whatever, you know, it could be as little or as much as we want, but then the driveway, you know, minimum of a. Twenty foot drive or twenty-five foot drive, whatever, then they could rearrange all of that to get the car to work.
Well, in the, oh gosh, what was the residential ordinance that we did a couple of years ago, we said that. I know, I know, but you remember everything, we did, we gave them a credit if they popped their garage behind the house. So that would be, okay.
Well, I think we need to look at those as two separate things.
Tell me what we finally decided.
Well, that, the distance of the driveway and the distance of the home are gonna be different, or can be different. Well, it sounds like we can stick with twenty for the home.
For the frontage setback.
Yes, and then.
On the, what?
That's true, yeah, from.
Say we say back of curb.
Back of curb, twenty feet still?
If there's ever a question that we can just define that the back of curb is.
The back of the street, yeah. But I.
Okay with twenty, that means, okay, okay. Then, from the driveway, what are we thinking on that? Cause how is that really gonna be different, we still have twenty feet. Twenty feet.
Oh, the fans, like you say, if it's a rear drive or, cause you guys were saying twenty wasn't enough, right?
Yeah.
From back of curb, it's not enough, cause you're gonna take up.
Bothers me though.
Nine feet of that.
Is there so many ifs in that, and you, you give them one restriction, but then it won't bother, if there's no sidewalk, you're not bothered by the twenty at all, right? So then you start having to say, well, it's twenty unless you have a sidewalk, and then it's something else. Or it's even more complicated, it's twenty. Unless there's a sidewalk, but it doesn't matter if you park from the rear, you, you understand?
Why don't we just leave it twenty, back of curb twenty and deal with the, the driveways and things like that in the development agreement?
Well, if you wanted to add some, I say you could leave it as twenty and then just say. Um, I mean, if you wanted to add a note, like driveway length needs to be negotiated.
Okay, I like that.
Cause then you can see how they're proposing and doing it, how long they are, how they're laying out the buildings, and we're not trying to tell them. Cause most of these people probably have done these before, they know what works, what they need, once again, I. I always hate us sitting here pretending like we all know how to set up a fifty-five.
And then the first one comes in and all of our questions are different.
Really, it should just be, really what we should be saying is, is we don't want you right on the street. So we're saying we feel comfortable as a city, we want you twenty feet back, but.
If we have enough verbiage in there that allows us to then say, okay, well, we'll address it in your concept and your development agreement, that's fair. Okay, I feel good about that, um. Back setbacks, everyone's okay with fifteen? We're trying to be able to keep the lot small.
Yeah, and you pick these numbers based off of what most of the other cities are, right?
Yep. Yes. Um, okay, then we went to building height, they obviously have to be single level. We talked a lot about being, having the ability to have the third car garage, that's just based on what size lots they wanna have. Which would be your frontage, right, exactly, um, all to have attached garages. And then how do we feel about bonus rooms above the garage? Do we care to limit that at all? I personally don't.
Didn't bother me anything.
Okay.
Inside the house.
Right. Um, do we need any specification on single level, like are we, were maybe bonus room above the garage? Or do we care about lofts at all, things like that, or are we just strictly single level? I'm fine with just strictly single level. There was just in some of the other ordinances, there was loft allowed or half level or things like that.
That whole second level is just a bonus room and it's sort of above the garage.
Right, but if there's stairs.
Yes.
Bonus room, then it's no longer single level.
Correct.
Well, that's why you're just putting exceptions to the single level, our bonus rooms or whatever you allow.
And I'm glad, I know that the biggest complication in these is storage. And it's hard, you don't have a basement, you don't have another level.
They're not allowed any accessory built units.
Yeah, there won't be any sheds.
It's gonna be the smallest shed you ever saw.
Right, but you're not talking like something that they could rent out, right, you're not talking about that size.
Well, if it's any kind of accessory structure.
State no ADUs, right?
Well, not necessarily ADU, I'm just saying, are we allowing sheds and other things on those?
I would be fine with a shed.
City stays out of that.
Yeah.
They can get out, good luck.
Yeah, cause they're still gonna have to abide by, I'm sure, because there's still lots, we still have. You can only have a certain amount of percentage, or, okay.
Oh yeah, as far as.
Yeah, well, sheds get weird because, you know, even though they're small sheds. According to our building inspector, even a small shed has to be four foot from the property line.
But what, is our rule forty percent, only forty percent of the lot can have?
I think this one might have to be a little different.
It's gonna be different.
I don't know if you're gonna hit those same requirements. I mean, this one's gonna be governed by the fact, your setbacks, your setbacks on all four sides, everything else is gonna be a house.
If it's an HOA.
But I don't know if we wanna start limiting the, that number, you're not gonna be able to make it work.
Hope like WHOA can enforce.
Um, okay, density, we ended up about five units per acre, and I, I think that's a pretty solid number.
When did you say that was? So I guess, when did you say that was, five units per acre?
Um, there was only one city that had six per unit, or sorry, six per acre.
Pretty.
Yeah, five was.
Five's gonna be tough, really, when you think about everything we're talking.
Put in the roads and everything else, I mean, really, if you have the smaller roads because they're private, it's about the only way you can get higher.
More, yep, yep.
You put maximum in front of that too.
Maximum five big units.
Because they got all this open space configuration, so you're. In some places it may be different, just by the way they arrange their open space.
Um, development agreement obviously required, does anyone have any, okay.
Yeah, I think that's a strong, yes.
And is that something that the city should have a template for, made up for this ordinance, or is this something? I don't want, I wouldn't want the developer coming to us with an agreement.
I don't know, we've never done, how many have we done as a city?
We have a template, but it's not set up for this.
I'm not sure. I don't know if there was a development.
We need to have our own paper.
Yeah, I don't know if there was a development agreement, that was a whole planned development, so I guess within that planned development, that was the agreement that, you know. Cause we have smaller lots out there, because of open space.
It would be nice to have one on hand and kind of direct the way they. Otherwise they could.
And if nothing else, it's gives us a template, we understand what we should be looking for.
Exactly.
Negotiating topics that we should be hitting and not just sitting down at a table empty handed, so.
Okay, um, interior designs, we talked a lot about this because. Plain city has interior design requirements, and I'm still convinced that's illegal.
Yeah, I don't think.
And I forgot to ask Liam that, but it, and, and you already have, like.
Well, like safety stuff.
Wider doorways.
Yeah, it had to be all ADA requirement or, um, inside. So they were requiring what size the hallways were, what size the door frames were, all that, and I. I've always been under the understanding that you cannot dictate a residential house, you can dictate commercial standards, but you cannot dictate a residential house. Other than your building code.
Plus, what would you dictate?
It would be hallways and doors to make sure that they be.
Applicable in some cases, but not in others, so you're required of all of them, even though ninety-eight percent of residents don't need it.
We cannot be more stringent than the building code. Unless we actually put in for an exception and we do amendments to the state building code, there are multiple amendments.
Anything to do with.
Can't, I don't think we wanna do, and so.
Okay.
I understand, they're trying to do those, they're trying to play the game of. When you resell a home and someone comes in with a wheelchair, you're accommodating to them.
And they're playing the game of kind of guaranteeing that it goes to an older, yeah, that's what they're playing, so that you don't end up with. The other percentage.
If we were concerned about that, I mean, you could put in there saying it's recommended that. You know, these.
I would leave it out.
Well, you could, I mean, you say if you wanted to guarantee that and saying that is, you know, the consideration is given for. You know, ADA and mobility with these homes.
Unless the state's looking for that, I wouldn't do it. I just wouldn't do that.
I'm just, I'm wondering what drove them to that, why they.
You should, I'll send it to you, cause it's funny, they have a very detailed interior package.
Though, and their landscaping and everything, they get quite creative.
Tree height and the diameter of the trunk.
Against an attorney very often, they've done.
Their authors are paid per word, remember that.
State commission saying that all new homes should be wired for electric vehicles, cause it's expensive to retrofit later. And that's kind of, I think, the approach here, is it's expensive later to try to accommodate someone in those conditions.
And that makes, I mean, in the perfect world, it makes sense, because they're basically thinking ahead of it to say, okay. For the longevity of this project, it will stay a fifty-five and older, but it was a little strange. The one thing we did talk about is, do we want any language in there that says that these homes cannot have stairs? But we might have nixed that with the bonus room. Ropes are acceptable, but no stairs.
No layers.
Yeah, cause that was the only thing we talked about, making sure that there weren't any stairs going into the home, but I don't think, okay.
If it's lab on grade, it's gonna not have any stairs going in anyway.
Not true always.
Cause I mean, you can't have any of those lips, and almost every home still does, cause of water.
Right?
Like my dad just built on the, on twenty-seven hundred north, in that fifty-five and older.
Did they have?
And they're automatically built. Like, the developers are smart, they're not gonna put four stairs into the house, like.
Right.
My dad's.
But they're, they're still no stairs, you know? Yeah.
I think the developer will take care of.
Yeah, they're trying to address these communities, I think they're gonna do it.
Um, then next, we talked about HOAs, are we against them, for them, prefer them, what are our thoughts?
Do this kind of an area without an HOA personally.
I agree, but the first question that always comes up, especially in our body, is we hate HOAs.
I think we allow the developer to have an opinion on that, and so.
I agree, and I think a lot of it takes weight off of the city too, when you have an HOA.
Well, cause most people are trying to move into these, cause I have in-laws that live in them. They don't have to do the snow removal, they don't have to take care of their yard, they don't have to.
And it's not put back on the city to make that happen.
And I know we're concerned about HOAs, but I think these are the exception, where generally these HOAs are what people want. They want to move into a community where everyone's taking care of everything.
Yeah, and I think that the mentality of the HOAs being a bad thing is very old school. Because they're, they are not set up like they used to be, and they're well-funded and there's new regulations toward them and, I mean, very different.
Yeah, you wouldn't want an HOA in a regular neighborhood.
So what, how do you say, allowed, recommended?
I would just say that, ooh, I haven't gone that far, I would just put in something that they're acceptable, or. We could even say, I would, I would say they're preferred.
Well, I'm kind of curious how you're gonna phrase this.
Do we need to phrase it?
If you just leave it out.
I would rather just leave it out rather than dance around.
I mean, unless we were saying no, I think that's the only reason you'd put it.
It's implied that it's allowed.
Yeah, I don't think we need to put.
Would that be, would that be if we created our own development agreement, we could just put HOA yes or no on it, and then they could bring it forward and show us?
I mean, if, if they're not gonna have, if the streets are private and all that other stuff, we're gonna require it.
Yep.
Cause we're gonna have a.
And there's never be written like that, that's.
It's gonna be written into the agreement, and so I, I think all of that, just, I think you can just leave it out, that's gonna come up then.
Okay, then lastly, um, we talked about some incentive programs, but I, I still stand behind, we don't need them. I think once we have this, there will be movement on it.
What incentive would you give them?
We talked about it, just being able to encourage the start of it.
That was the only concern is, if we want it to happen, we wanna be able to report progress.
Well, is that like a new state requirement of what are we doing to promote these kind of?
That was, that was.
I mean, they're gonna ask those kinds of questions right now.
Yeah, and that's.
I think at this phase, saying we're creating the ordinance to allow it is our. Now, if we track it a year and we've gotten zero traction, then maybe we have to.
Readdress those.
Address our thing, but I think right now we just.
Like we allow internally ADUs, IA ADUs, right, but. Right now, now, our next step is, now we gotta figure out how to count them and register them, cause.
No, I think it's a good start and I don't think there'll be a problem with it coming in.
I wouldn't do that.
Okay, okay, that's our main list, do you guys have any other concerns or points that we didn't hit? Or should be thinking about before we draft up?
I always lean on the side of not pretending we're the developers and we know what we're getting so stringent on these that backfires. I mean, all the ones we've seen go in around here, it seemed like great places, I haven't heard negative stuff about them, so. Not super concerned.
I think we should, I don't remember if we said that the development agreement is required, but I think we should state that for any patio home development. Because I think the zone can be pretty light, but where we can get really down to the details is in the development agreement.
That's where the details will come out.
Yes, because each plot or each parcel's going to require, you know, maybe have a little bit different need, and that's where the development agreement can really step in.
Well, cause it's neat, it's gonna have to address your stormwater and your sewer, cause some of these, depending on how they're laid out. If it's private. Where, where, where do we end versus where, you know, where's our beginning and ending point with connections and all that kind of stuff, so. Basically, I think a lot of that stuff will flush out in that agreement.
And some of, yeah, well, yeah, especially when you're sharing utilities too. Okay.
Just one thought I had, um, back to size, we didn't wanna limit. The size, but what if somebody had an acre and said they wanna have no, no HOA and throw five houses on there, is that a development?
Yeah, cause you'd have to have roads, I don't think that the design would ever.
Yeah, it would be too expensive for infrastructure problem to do that.
Well, I just don't think you could design it.
So I guess that's the question, is there a minimum acreage where we're saying you gotta at least have three acres? We're not gonna entertain it if it's under that.
I would be okay with something like that.
I don't know that you need to, because I think the streets, the requirement for the streets, the requirement for just the basic uti, basic.
They'd come in with something, we'd say that, that's just such a ridiculous design, you know, it's not gonna work.
It doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Someone that's coming in and wants to build three lots for their. Trying to do it in this little tiny area.
Right now that has, you know, a couple of acres, two acres. They're like, well, I'm gonna turn this into this, is that?
That wouldn't.
Are we okay with that?
But on the smaller lots, wouldn't that count as an external ADU? That's true.
They're just trying to build like two homes.
I understand that, yeah.
That are older, and so they're using this as that exception, I, but, I don't know if you'd really see that happen, but.
I think there's a lot of protection in that development agreement.
Yeah, too, like, I think what Dave did, in order to pay for the infrastructure put in, they're gonna have to have a bigger development anyway, so.
That's not true, it's cheap to put a, you know, a couple laterals to two lots, a lot cheaper than running thirty to thirty lots.
That does bring up, um, a question, how did we deal with, we probably, we really should have a maximum lot size in these.
Well, and that's what I was just thinking when he brought that up, and like, what happens if someone came in and said, well, this lot only can figures to be half an acre? But.
They go right to the five foot and fifteen.
Would, because to, exactly to Josh's point. Someone has a parcel and they're like, oh, I'm gonna be able to shove three homes on this, where I typically wouldn't meet the R one fifteen zoning requirements. So that's where we have, we have to protect ourselves.
Minimum rather than.
No, I think of a maximum.
Maximum lot size.
Which you think about, okay, if we're trying to stay in the eighteen hundred with the setbacks, et cetera. What does that maximum lot size look like, it's more like a quarter acre, right?
Well, do you say the maximum is R one, is fifteen thousand square feet, because then they would, it would push them, force them to be in the R one fifteen.
That's kinda what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, I'd be okay with that.
Just something to protect us from the up.
So saying basically your lots in here can't be any bigger than, and maybe it's not even fifteen thousand square feet.
It's lower, I think it's.
Then it would force them to say, okay, well, we can't do this ordinance, we have. But then it would force them to say, okay, well, we can't do this ordinance. We have to be R one fifteen now and abide by those rules instead. Or you do ten thousand, they can't be bigger than ten thousand square feet.
Because I think that fits the need. That way, someone's not gonna go to try, try to build a single-family home on a quarter acre lot and then pass it as a patio home.
If you, I'm just.
I Google, because that's my thought.
Oh, yeah, that'd have to be a pretty big lot for ten thousand, okay? Because even a seventy by seventy or five thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's why I say it could even be lower than ten, like. I think we just crunch some numbers and come up with something.
So I think the lowest, so I think the minimums we saw on corner lots were at least sixty-five hundred square feet on some of the ordinances we looked at. So maybe we're like maximum eight thousand-ish.
Developer develop the whole area. This isn't, you can just sell off lots and people can come build smaller ones? Or are we requiring that this is a full, developer builds this whole community? Because that was my understanding, is this is like a fifty-five and old community, the developers laying this out. So, I mean, they may have a few different house styles, but this isn't a, they create a subdivision, and if you're fifty-five and old, you can buy a lot, build whatever house you want.
See, and I don't know why that, why we care. I don't, see. I know, but.
I think we need to.
The development agreement should be for the community concept.
Oh, yeah, but it would still stick if they, well, I guess no, because then the, the development agreement would be assigned to someone else. So they would have to keep it, okay?
That was my, that's what we've seen with all these other.
Yeah, and you're right, the development agreement gets assigned if it does change.
Yeah, I don't think we're looking at these as, if someone creates it and they're selling off the lots, because that's gonna fall apart fast.
But there's not always, the developer isn't always the builder, so would we incorporate? But he would still own it, so it wouldn't matter. I'm fine with that.
You don't want to open the door for some of our larger lots to suddenly turn into these communities. These one or two acre lots.
Yeah.
They, they would be kind of misusing the intent.
Well, no, that's, I'm not talking about that, but it wouldn't be a horrible thing in my mind if, okay, so someone came and did this community and they sold off the lots, but then the development agreement would struggle. But I see what you're saying. Okay.
I think we see this as a benefit if it's a cohesive environment with open space and everything's laid out.
It's integrated. You can't, you know, it's.
The nice thing about a development agreement, though, is it follows the parcel. So it doesn't matter who owns it, the parcel owner has to abide by the development agreement.
That's why I said it'd have to be assigned to the new, yeah. So you could get it entitled, get it gone, and then you could, and in a lot of those development agreements, the city has to approve who's taking over the development agreement, too.
But I'm just saying, even if.
You can put it in there, because we've done it in North Ogden, where the city has to approve who the development agreement is getting assigned to.
I'm just saying, even if you have fifty lots, sell to individuals, doesn't matter.
Right. Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, is that they still have to abide by that development.
And the enforcement is you don't get your permit, you don't get your inspections, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, we're thinking the same then, yeah. But I'm okay with.
But I agree. It'd be nice to have a single development. Yes, I agree. The only thing you, you can see happen sometimes is it starts out that way, and then the bank takes it over, and then it gets farmed out.
Because I think, that's how I think you keep it more of the fifty-five and older, is when it's that kind of community and it's built that way. I think if you open it up the other way, that's when it's gonna fall apart.
Well, what happens when these are part of a mixed use, too? Because sometimes they'll sell off sections, say, well, this company's gonna build the townhomes, but this company's gonna build the patio homes. They still have to abide by the development agreement, though. And whoever owns the land is the one that's gonna have to.
Yeah, and that'll be in their disclosures going through their devoilitions, so.
Yeah, we're thinking the same then.
So we're basically seeing that these are gonna be allowed in residential and mixed use.
Well, that's, I'm not saying it has to be, but that was the discussion. I would assume we'd want it in our mixed use.
I would agree.
I think it kind of already is.
Yeah, it is allowed, it is allowed.
Not for fifty-five and older, but.
That's perfect. I think that gives us a great start to draft something up, so. I appreciate you guys coming tonight. That just probably came off a chair. Oh, hold on, I'm, I'm down. I don't know. Sorry.
Take that over there. I don't want this.
Brendan, you're so good at this.
I didn't touch it. Well, I'm trying to figure out a way that I can put these in order so that I can pull up what is what.
Well, if you go into the Dropbox, they're kind of in order. Well, at least they're like put together.
So I did some checking on the number of kids from Far West.
Oh, yeah.
Counting the fish burns, there was thirteen. Fish burns weren't there, so we had eleven. And I was just counting the kids from Far West. I haven't had a chance to go, the other ones, I just did a quick count.
So we're, we're less than fifty percent then?
Less than fifty percent. We had twenty-eight kids and eleven of them.
That answers a concern I had, because I thought, once we exhaust our own population, is this gonna sort of die down?
Considering what we had this last time, I don't think so.
If we just keep reaching out, I mean, there's no.
Yeah, we've got a, yeah, we got a good thing going over there. In fact, I gave, I gave, um, Suzie my key on Saturday. And she's got this.
And you can scoot over a little if you feel like you're.
I was gonna send her a text to have her take the worms out of fruit and give them to the fishermen. In fact, I better do that right now.
Well, that's good. At least we're on the right track, and now we can start to put something together. Yeah.
Don't answer your phone. I screwed up on my phone. I accidentally. I'm actually, hang it up, will you?
Oh, okay.
I was trying to send a text and.
You don't know how to answer it? I mean, you don't know how to hang up?
This is a new phone. I'm leaving you a voicemail.
Oh.
Hold on here, I gotta.
I hung up. How are you leaving me a voicemail?
I don't know.
Maybe I didn't hang up.
No, I'm gonna, oh, hang up. There it is.
There's so much today.
Yeah, there is. Brendan, you're really earning your spot here today. Do you practice before?
I'm really actually worried about this, how many stuff there is to pull up. Worried about what order I call a man and. Spending my money today.
Greg, do you wanna lead the pledge? And Brandon, you wanna do the prayer?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm asking a lot of you tonight, Brandon.
I'm gonna send a text and ask you to take the worms out and give them to a fisherman.
Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and we're going to have Greg lead us in the pledge and Brandon in the prayer. If everyone would stand.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we're indeed grateful for this opportunity we have to meet as a planning commission. We're grateful for this beautiful country we live in and this amazing city that we live in. Please bless us that we will be able to make good decisions and be good stewards over the decisions going forward for the city. Bless the residents that live within the city, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, moving on to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment? We don't have any. Moving next on to report from city council.
Okay, this is my report from May eighteenth last week. We received a report from the planning commission, and I did want to thank you all for your work on M one rework and the commercial landscaping and fifty-five plus. You guys have been busy. And then the mayor did give an assignment, I don't know if Geneva's reported on the, to the planning commission, to have each member follow up with neighboring cities and counties to keep up kind of with what they're doing that might affect us. So I'm sure you've gotten that info, but just as a highlight. Um, we approved minutes and bills. We approved, um, some business, a business license. We set a public hearing for the vacation of the public utility easement. We did approve the resolution to adjust a common boundary with Marriott Slaterville and set a public hearing. Apparently, that was done already, but it didn't get to the governor's desk in time by whatever powers to be, I don't know, so we're redoing it. We approved a conditional use permit in the M one zone for Benlman Business Park. We gave preliminary approval for that Benlman Business Park subdivision, and we approved conditional use permit in C two zone for triad land development with the, um, conditions that you guys had put on that. And then, um, we reported on an assignments. I just wanted to bring up, Katie's been working on getting quotes for that pedestrian bridge, and it came back at two point four million. So just as a heads up, that's kind of what they're working with. We're moving forward just to see. But that was kind of the one, I think, that's been discussed other places, so I wanted to report on that, but that's all I have. Any questions?
Okay, moving on to our first agenda item. Public hearing to consider the request of a rezone for Dennis Brown located at approximately eighteen hundred north, twelve hundred west. A portion of parcel fifteen, five forty-one from A one to C two. Do we have a motion to move into a public hearing?
We move, we move into the public hearing.
Motion by Lou. Second by Darren. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are now in a public hearing. Do we have a representative at all here? I don't see, okay, I was like, I don't see the guy from last time. If you'd come up and say your name and address and just tell us simply why you're requesting the rezone.
Well, I, I'm Dennis Brown and, uh.
Your address.
Twenty-one nineteen west, six thousand south and Rory. Okay, so I'm not a resident of the city. First of all, I just want to make clear that, um, it's not Dennis Brown property. It's A and E Brown Development on our application. But that's, that, that's on the, on your agenda later on down, two or three rows down. I don't think that makes any difference, but the family has decided to sell this property. We've owned it for many, many years. The cell phone tower's been on the property for approximately thirty years, and they, it's zoned agricultural right now, and we just feel like it needs to be changed to commercial before we sell off the rest of the farm later on down the road. So that's where we're at as far as the, the property. And I thought there'd be a representative here, the surveyor, but.
Just the portion that the cell phone tower is on, yeah.
Just the area.
Not for the whole piece.
No, just the small area that the cell tower's been currently on for. Uh, it went on, it went in in ninety-four, September of ninety-four. That's when it went in. So it's been almost thirty years. So we're just doing a small area.
They leased that from you prior, right?
Yes, uh, Lyle Dab used to rent it from us, and, um, I can't think of the guy right now. Dennis Illam has been renting the farm from, from us for years, many years.
Just that where the cell tower is, is what he's talking about.
We're just, we're just talking about.
Yeah, I was just talking, they were leasing that property, right? They didn't own that, the cell tower?
No, no.
And then, you, are you selling that to them then?
The farm?
No.
The, the cell tower property?
Yes, we are selling the cell phone tower property to the cell phone tower company.
Is where I have the mouse kind of the area you're talking about?
Sorry, I have hearing aid problems.
Is where the mouse is on the screen, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, that small area.
It's that little curve.
Yeah, it's pretty close to the fire station, just, fire station just north of there. And it's right adjacent to the, to the road.
Okay, that's perfect. You can have a seat for a second. You'll have to, I think you have to come back up, but you can have a seat for a second. Is there anyone else in the public? Yeah, come up. Say your name and address.
On assignments in twelve thirty-nine West Terraceville Road. We live, we live right there on West Terraceville Road, and we've been there for probably, I'm gonna say, twenty-eight years-ish. Um, that corner is extremely busy. Um, I'm sure you all know you've been backed up there. We can't even get out of our driveway at several times. If we make it commercial, how much traffic is that gonna add to that spot?
So it is just for the cell phone tower, and the whole piece is not going commercial.
Oh, okay.
Just the little lot, so that they can.
I don't really notice any difference, because the use of the parcel is the same as it's been for decades, so.
So it's just that portion. The rest of the ground is still staying agriculture.
Okay, so is there any plans on that corner to ever put a light there or any, anything?
That's not the issue tonight.
Yeah, we don't have anything.
It's been subdivided, and now they're requesting a rezone of the small parcel.
It's been subdivided, commercial or residential?
No, so it's just this little lot four has been, so it potentially will be subdivided tonight, and this little portion will be commercial. That's it.
Okay.
This all stays as is. If you have some traffic issues and stoplight and things like that, I would recommend coming to city council and voicing them in front of them.
Just an aside, when and if that other parcel is developed, that's when we'll have the discussion about traffic and street access and all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I motion that we close.
Okay, motion by Darren.
My second.
Second by Brandon. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Moving on to the next item, recommendation to the city council for the approval or denial of the request of the rezone for, well, a portion of Dennis Brown property located at approximately eighteen hundred north, twelve hundred west. Is there any?
I make a recommendation to the city council to approve the request to rezone a portion of the Dennis Brown property with the information listed.
Uh, motion by Lyle.
Second.
Second by Lou. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, recommendation to the city council approval or denial of A and E Brown amended subdivision located at approximately eighteen hundred north, twelve hundred west. Now, this is just the actual subdivision that will take that lot off. Well, you needed it to rezone to go to the subdivision? Portion? Well, I guess you could. Well, no, you couldn't because of the square footage requirement. That's why we put it the way it is. Any discussion here on the, it's pretty explanatory. It's just that portion, and that is why we allowed them to go commercial like this, because then they didn't have to do the minimum fifteen thousand square foot lot portion, so. Any discussion on it or questions? Is there a motion at all?
I recommend to the. I recommend to the city council approval of the A&E Brown amended subdivision located approximately 1800 North 1200 West.
A motion by Lou.
I'll second.
Second by Lyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the next item, recommendation to the city council approval or denial of the request of the sign or for sign approval for Far West Center located at 1980 North 2000 West. Is there a representative here at all for that sign? No, is there a discussion at all on this? Questions?
I, I move that we table it.
Okay.
There's no one here to discuss it with us.
Was it a big change? It doesn't look like.
I was like, do we have any questions on it?
No.
I'm okay moving it forward if we don't have questions.
If it, if it meets the, the size requirements, it certainly looked like an attractive marker.
Matches their.
Can I ask you a question?
You can come up, yeah.
Sir, I don't know when your city council meeting is gonna be. So when, when is the city council meeting gonna be held?
Next. Uh, yeah, next Thursday at 7 o'clock, same time.
Next Thursday?
June 1st.
June 1st? Okay, so that's when it'll be presented to the city council for people.
Sorry, I should have told you that. Yes, that'll be when it's presented to the city council. Thanks. Um, if there aren't any questions, I mean, we can move it forward. I thought it was fine and it meets all of our requirements.
Yeah, I looked over it and it looked like it was okay.
I think it looks good.
Is there a recommendation either way?
Lyle did make a recommendation.
I'm, I'm fine going forward. I'm sorry.
Or is there a second to Lyle's recommendation?
No, I, I, I'm fine with it.
You wanna revise your recommendation?
Make a motion to recommend to the city council approval of the request for a sign for Far West Center located 1980 North 2000 West.
Motion by Darren.
I'll second.
Second by Greg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, set a public hearing for June 8th to consider the request of a conditional oh, conditional use permit for a 4,000 square foot accessory building for John Harris located at 3188 North Pelican Drive. Is John Harris here? Will you come up to the?
This is awesome. Thank you for your service. Appreciate that.
Say your name and address even though we know it.
John, John Harris, address is, if I remember it right, almost a year now, 3188 North Pelican.
Perfect. Okay, tell us what you're kind of doing.
What I'd like to do is build a barn to put my motorhome and my boat and store it in there and then have enough room to put a car in there or, you know, put some tools or something like that. So.
Okay.
4,000 square feet. My neighbor across the street, I have his plans. And so my neighbor across the street built this same size barn at 3183 Pelican. So Martin. So I called the city to make sure that, and I have a plot map of this. If you'd like to see what it, this is kind of the instruction. This is a copy. These aren't the structural plans. I requested those from the engineering, but I need this approval first to, to get to that. But just to build a barn, couple doors, walk indoors and then
Beware of the setback and height requirements and all that.
Yes, I talked to Nate.
Yeah.
Yep, and he told me that I could go up to 16 or 18 feet sides. It's on an acre parcel. And so, you know, did I meet the requirements of that? It'll be 90 feet away from my current home.
To the east.
To the east, yes, correct.
Or 2000 West.
I have, I drew with all of my engineering specialties. I drew a little plot. I've got a couple of them and copied, but here's the current house. I'd like to put the barn over here, which is 10 feet away from the fence, meeting code. And then I don't want to put it all the way to the back of the property. This is the highway, 2000 West. And so anyway, with that plot, I'd like to, to just build this so that it's at least a little bit walking distance with room for a fire pit or something in between. So.
What about the power line easement? I believe you can't build under that.
Okay, well, that's why I'm here. Tell me.
That's, that was just what was brought up to me. So you may want to investigate that a little bit.
Okay.
And I don't know the exact avenue you would go about it. Did you recently purchase your home?
Yes, in June.
Do you have a title report still?
Probably.
You called the title company?
I just gave them the money.
I know. If you, if you call the title company where you closed at, they should be able to send you your title report and in the exceptions in that report, you'll have, it's probably Utah Power and Light or something.
Okay.
And it'll tell you what you can and can't do under there. Yeah, because it's a, or yeah, for, yeah, 50 foot easement. And usually you can't build under them.
And it's to protect you if they ever had to do repair work, you know what would happen to your shed.
Yeah, and I don't have any, I don't have any of the poles, but the lines, the wires go over the top. And I noticed that my neighbors all have buildings underneath those.
It's to be safe.
So not be, then you may be able to, but you might want to check that before.
But I'll check that.
On what your neighbors have done. I would check.
Okay. Well, that, that's why I haven't gone to structure yet.
Yes.
For this until we get it approved to, to go. So.
And Nate, Nate told me that like in a building.
On me already.
Right. Building square footage ratio for your lot that you were good because you were on an acre and it sounds like
Yes.
you have a smaller square footage home. So it wasn't.
I've got a 2,000 square foot. Now we're gonna add on another 2,000 onto the back.
Okay.
But I don't know if I have to go through a public hearing for that. It's only 2,000 to add on a master bedroom, which is a huge master bedroom, but you ought to see the bathroom.
You may want to ask Nate and say, hey, if I have this 4,000 square foot shop and we add 2,000 onto my house, you may be over the ratio of buildable area on your lot.
Oh, okay.
So, so ask Nate that. He'll be able to tell you.
You better find out now rather than build the shed.
You don't want to build the shed and then no master because you won't have a wife.
Oh, that's, yeah. Okay, so I, I will, I'll go back to the title company, check in to see about line easements or something. So, all right. I see you put down here June 8th.
Yes.
Okay, do, do I just report back on June 8th what my findings are to, to that?
Uh, yes, well, and yes, yep, exactly.
Do I have to bring donuts or anything like that?
Yeah, we can always deny it. Yeah, so in two weeks, same time, right here.
You should be able to have all the answers by then. Okay. I'll do. I, I should be able to get it tomorrow if, if I can.
Unless you just want to live in, stay in your trailer and your wife take over the house. I says unless you want to stay in your trailer and your wife take over the house because you can't add on.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, and then I'll check on the ratio as well with, with Nate.
Nate can answer that. Just make sure you say, hey, I'm also planning to do an addition to my house. Where does that put me? I think you'll probably still be okay, but that's a big shop.
Yeah, so with your, with your shop in the back there, is, is the plan to enter that off of 2,000? A lot of your neighbors have.
Well, I've already taken out the back gate.
That is.
As soon as, as soon as the water builds up into that. I have a French drain that drains directly to the, to the street.
I actually forgot about that. You cannot have access off 2,000.
No.
What?
You, you cannot access that shed off 2,000. The one, I, I actually forgot. This is why Nate called. Those, those accesses that are current are not, not legal accesses. So you can only access this shed off of Pelican Drive, not 2,000. And that will be a condition of your conditional use permit.
You would have to get.
Are you gonna pay to move my shed that's sitting in the driveway?
What do you mean?
I have a, the current owner built a shed that's in the driveway to get to the backyard. I had to cut my fence down just to access the back.
You would have to go through UDOT to get an access off 2,000.
That's right.
Okay, so I can't apply for.
You can try, yeah.
It's just that before you build it, I would make sure you've got all your ducks lined up. That includes the public easement. If you're thinking of access to 2,000 West, you better make sure you've talked to UDOT.
And before you have a conditional use permit granted, we would need to know from UDOT because we would put a condition that you don't have access off of 2,000.
Okay, so now I need to contact UDOT too. That's gonna cost me more donuts.
Uh, you can talk to them for free. But you'll have to apply for a meeting, yeah, like a technical review.
Okay.
And they have requirements. Their access approve, approve or approvals are based on feet. So it only can be 500 feet from their last granted access. So if.
Yeah, the city, the gas is next door, right next door to me. So the gas line that they built, there's a substation that's right there that has a gravel access right there, a substation that does. I can actually pull into that gravel and then pull into my backyard.
And if they have an access, UDOT's requirement is 500 feet between accesses.
So what you're saying is you're not gonna be able to get it from UDOT.
Okay.
But call UDOT, talk to them.
Okay.
And we can still set the public hearing for next week.
Two weeks.
Sorry, two weeks from now.
Yeah.
If you in a week and a half don't have enough information back, we can just take it off the agenda.
Okay.
You're, you're being very wise. We've had other people that have assumed that actions in the past constitute current law. And that's not true. So you're, you, this may seem like we're having you jump through some hoops now, but we're gonna save you some grief later.
Yeah. And I can build, I mean, I'd be okay building it even if I can't get access. I just need to move a shed to do out of that.
Exactly.
And I'll, I'll bill you guys.
There you go.
It'll work, but anyway, thank you for.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
No, I think that's it for now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion?
Side motion, we set a public hearing for June 8th to consider the request of a conditional permit use for a 4,000 square foot accessory building for John Harris located at 3188 North Pelican Drive.
A motion by Brandon.
I'll, I'll second.
Second by Lyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you. Okay, moving on to set a public hearing for June 8th, 2023 to consider the request of a conditional use permit for warehousing and distribute, distribution. Ooh, an M1 zone for Jared Boyer and David Philstead located at approximately 2,700 North 1900 West.
Would you show me where this is? I looked at our it's not, it's not in our general plan. What he's saying is M1 isn't M1 in our general plan.
Unless it's that property that you did.
Well, it's the one, yeah, it's by where we rezoned it.
Well, he is, he says.
Is there anyone here to represent this property?
1900 West, that put it pretty much right along 2,700 North, you know, so I, I had a hard time knowing what exact, what parcel is even talking about.
Wasn't there a?
So is he telling behind Maverick?
Right, where we.
North, east of you guys.
Yes, that's what it is.
So that's way north of 2,700.
That's way north of 2,700 North.
Yeah, but there's no street there, so there's no address.
Is there no plot, Brandon? Sorry.
I tell you, I went to this.
Sorry, I knew where it was. I didn't know you guys had a plot.
Remember they came in and.
The, it's the one that we rezoned.
The very north, northeast.
Where the future road comes around.
Yeah.
It's that piece we, we left M1.
The very northeast.
Do you think I could pull it up?
I, okay, that is, that is in the general plan, but I sure didn't know that was the parcel. Okay, I would never have recognized it from this description.
Sorry. The application had a tax ID, didn't it? Yeah.
No, it's, it's, that parcel is, is consistent.
Brandon, do you know how to go to the county website?
Uh, I don't have any keyboard over here.
Keyboard.
I don't have a keyboard. I just took the mouse.
Uh.
I traveled the mouse with no key. I didn't think this was a keyboard involved.
If you pull up Weaver County. Okay, go over, go over to the Far West Maverick on 2,700. Let's go to G, the D I S.
Which one? The top one?
Not, no, not the assessor. Go down. Greg might be able to find it faster. I don't know where you are. No.
Is it G I S you thought I got?
Yeah. Yeah, parcel viewer, that works.
So it's. So it is.
Oh, sorry, Brandon. I'm not helping you very much. All right, no, that's not it. Go back to Google and just say Weaver County parcel search. There, just go, yeah, click parcel search right here. Right there. Go up, 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 up. There you go.
It's hard.
Then go interactive maps.
Interactive maps.
Yeah.
Every time.
Yep. And just go to your, or type in the address if you want. Just do Far West or 2,700 North. Or you can zoom in if you want. Zoom into like, yeah, there you go. It's perfect.
I grab it and pull it? Yes.
There you go. There's 2,700. So now zoom in a little bit, but you have to go east of the freeway. There you go. Now pull down.
Okay, see, because I think they were talking over here. I thought.
Pull, keep pulling down. Just pull down.
Okay.
Pull down. I don't know why it's doing that. Keep pulling. No, don't zoom in though, zoom out.
Just grab and pull.
There you go.
Is that big square right there?
Yep, go north.
The square?
No, one more.
Yeah, there you go. Click it.
Well.
Far Weston, oh, is it one more?
No, that's it.
Oh, okay. Okay. No, it's M1. I assume it was Far Weston. Okay, okay, you're good. Good work, Brandon. Sorry about that. There you go. Okay. That's the one that we rezoned whenever.
I don't have any problem. I just looked at this, this description here in our.
Sorry, I didn't realize there wasn't an.
I don't know where this is at.
Parcel ID. Um, okay, so this is just to set a public hearing and there isn't anyone here to answer some of the questions, but.
I think we should go ahead and set the public hearing anyway.
Then we can ask them. Okay, do we have a motion by?
I move that we set a public hearing for June 8th, 2023 to consider the request of a conditional use permit for warehousing and distribution in the M1 zone for Jared Boyer and David Philstead located approxim, well, I haven't, I'm gonna stop there. I didn't like this approximate part anyway.
Why don't you just say the parcel number? Go back to the, does someone have the parcel number?
I meant my agenda, so I can.
19.
That would be a good thing to put in the minutes.
016. 0058. Did you get that, Mackenzie? Okay. Motion by Lou. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Darren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, recommendation to the city council approval or denial of the Far West Station subdivision located at 1,300 North 1200 West. Do we have anyone here for that? Where is everyone?
I don't know, but they are suggesting we relinquish a public easement. And I'm wondering how many of those utilities service something to the south of that parcel.
Well, usually when we get those, we see letters from the corresponding utilities that say that they're okay with that being gone. But we didn't see any of those. No, we didn't see any of those.
Right.
But are they, is it, here's my question. Is that being shifted because the lots are being shifted or is it in the same place as the PUE was before the lot was subdivided? I'm talking about the public utility easement, that one in the back.
They just want to own that and not have it disturbed. That's their intent.
Matt's letter or whatever said that they don't want other utilities to be in or around their huge pipe was the reasoning behind it. Because they're like, we don't want people digging and moving and doing things so close to our main.
I understand the rationale for that, but I also would like to hear those utilities convince us that they don't, will never have to access that.
Agreed. And that there isn't, if they're not in there currently, I'm okay with it, but if they are, then I can't.
Have some serious problems with that.
Yeah. It's just weird that they're, usually we see all of the letters saying we're okay with them not having this. We're okay removing our easement. And I don't see any of that unless I'm misunderstanding what this was about.
No, we don't have anybody here to talk about it.
No, so let's maybe table it. Or do we, well, no, sorry, that's the other one.
Right, we don't have sufficient information. I would, I would move that we table.
A motion by Lou.
I'll second.
Second by Lyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, moving on to the next, recommendation to the city council final approval or denial of the Ben Lomond Business Park subdivision located at 1,500 West 2350. located at 1500 West, 2350 North. They did clear up, so this is the one that the only thing they had left. Um, was to clear, clear up the will serve letters and the final approval from the ditch company. They still are pending on the ditch company.
So.
And they're just waiting for pipe sizing. But I would, I would want to make sure before that they're, depending on tonight, would want to make sure before they're on city council's agenda that they have the ditch company cleared up. So if they don't have that by this Thursday, which would have been today, that they don't get on next week's agenda.
And the implications, I think, are serious enough to table it because if, 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 if they can't, if, if the water in their, their stormwater pond can't exit when it's full.
Right.
Then they've got a water problem.
See, it has more to do with they're just waiting on the size of the pipe to be told by the irrigation company so that they know what to construct to get the final will serve. So from my understanding, it's not so much that they don't have.
They can't do it.
That they can't do it. It's that they don't know what infrastructure is going in. So I, well.
So they're piping the ditch is what they're doing.
Yeah. And they just aren't told what size pipe that they, which makes sense because they're probably doing studies to figure out what pipe needs to go in there.
It's a big, it's a big enough development that I think that we need to make sure our bases are covered before we move forward with this.
The one thing I would feel is I don't know that it's necessarily um, that it has to come back to us for that. I would say something like maybe we move it forward, but on condition that they cannot be on city council agenda until they have that cleared up. Because I don't know, I feel like it's a little pointless for them to come back to us. To say, cool, you checked it off.
I'm fine with that.
But they can't be on city council agenda to say the same thing either. So it still will push them. I mean, I guess that's the thing. It will push them back two weeks, no matter what. And if they do come back to.
Back here, though, they can just be put right on the agenda.
If, if the condition is met, aren't we satisfied?
Yes. That's true. There you go. I'm great with that. Is there a motion at all related to that?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the, let's see.
City council.
City council final approval of the Ben Lohman Business Park subdivision located at 1500 West, 2350 North with the condition that they have the ditch issue resolved.
Prior.
Prior to appearing before the city council.
Perfect. Motion by Darren.
Second.
Second by Lou. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next one, recommendation to city council site plan approval for the Ben Lohman Business Park North Building located at approximately 1500 West, 2350 North. Uh, Lou.
I think the same conditions would play on this one as well, wouldn't it?
Well, I almost feel like they need to be here to talk a little bit about the site plan.
When you start talking site plan.
Yeah.
I think.
Well, wait a minute, never mind. I was.
No, no, I, I think for site plan, they ought to.
Yeah.
A lot of them to show up.
I, sorry, the other one was subdivision. This was site plan. I.
Yeah, sorry, two different.
That was my mistake, sorry.
Especially for preliminary site plan, they need to be here to.
I, I.
Talk about parking infrastructure.
I got the two.
The what?
It'll come back up then, yeah, it's true.
Just not through their site plan, which is fine.
I move that we table it.
Okay, motion by Lyle. Second by Greg. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next item, approval of minutes dated May 11th, 2023. Um, I had a comment on these and I meant to email you, Mackenzie, and I didn't get to it. But the part in the minutes, gosh, I'll email you about them. There's a part in there that literally only says what I did. I don't want to be the only one in the minutes. Gosh, oh, can I email you on that? Can we table those minutes?
You took them on the screen.
I know, I forgot to get to you. No, there was a part with Jordan Watson. Hold on one second. No, it wasn't that one, actually. Yes, and then there was no other comments on it and I don't want to be the only ones comments that were. Let me pull it up quickly. Yeah, well, it was one of the first ones, so hold on. Okay, so it was business item four B. And it just says Geneva Blanchard spoke to the city attorney and voiced that they both feel uncomfortable about the conditions that have been placed on the conditional use permit. Can we add a little bit of what everyone else said in there just so it's not, because there was a little bit more discussion in there. So just not my one comment that looks like I kind of forced people to go one direction. That's it. My, everything else looks fine, though.
Should we table that so we can review the change?
Correct. So we have a motion.
I move that we table the minutes dated May 11th.
Motion by Lou.
Well, second.
Second by Darren. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, report on assignments. Brandon?
I don't have anything to do.
Lou or Lyle?
I have a couple of things. Um, last, well, first of all, we did have the final day of the fishing club last Saturday and out of, we had 30 kids signed up, but only 28 actually showed up consistently. And we only were short three kids on the last day of the class. We even had fish planted in there, 800 trout, and I still don't think very many people caught them. I got their hopes up and they were dashed to the ground almost immediately. Yeah, there was a few, yeah, but it was very successful. Uh, one thing I want to point out is that this is, we're in the beginning of our fifth year of this program. And I've checked my roles in the past and we've had over 200 kids come through that program in the last five years. So that's 200 more kids that'll know how to fish and hopefully will stay out of video games at least a little bit. And then also on the 16th of May, I attended a workshop. I was invited to U, uh, Utah Door Recreation Strategic Workshop. I thought it would kind of help our city and everything, but it was five, it was a good five hour, it was, it was a good workshop. But to me, it seemed like what, uh, the Utah League of Cities and Towns is for us, the, the strategic workshop, this program is what it is for recreation. But I learned a lot while I was there and also I had a chat with Patrick Morrison. They got some more information on the grant. Because we're waiting, we were waiting on the contract to be signed before we can do anything and he says, you can start work now without, he says, we'll just backdate the contract. And with that being said, we met, had an kind of impromptu park meeting last week and we, I made some calls and they're going to start construction on June 5th, start laying those piles in that, in the pond. So we're moving forward with that. And I think that's all I've got. Yep.
Lou?
Nothing to report.
Uh, Greg? Darren?
So nothing to report other than I will not be here on June 8th.
Okay, which reminds me, I will not be here on June 8th either. So Lyle will be leading the meeting and I've already forewarned him, so. Um, as far as assignments, I have some assignment. I'm trying to think if I've been, there hasn't been any development meetings since last. Um, but I do have assignments per the mayor for each of you. Um, and it's to kind of follow, to pick a city, a surrounding city. And I can do two things. I can assign you a city or you guys can choose cities. Um, whichever you'd prefer, but to follow them to, if you have time, maybe attend a meeting or you can watch most of their meetings online, uh, read minutes, agendas, see what the planning commission is doing and new things they're revising, coming up with, changing, um, and just kind of follow them. There's a lot of good information and a lot of things happening in the surrounding cities. So would you guys prefer if I?
I, I would like to pick my own.
Oh, good, okay. Stand up to me.
I'll take, I'll take North Austin since I know up there.
There you go. Okay, I like it. Does anyone else want to shout out?
I'm intrigued by the creativity of Plain City.
Plain City, okay. Lou, Darren, why doesn't everyone pick and I'll assign the other boys one? Brandon, do you have one?
I'll do Pleasant View.
Pleasant View? Okay. Lou or Lyle?
Um, I'll do West Haven.
Ooh.
Or somebody else wants it.
My favorite.
Look, you want, you want it, Geneva?
No.
Okay.
Um.
I should have said Harris.
Okay, Greg, do you have a preference?
I think what's left, Harris.
Yeah, or Marriott Sliderville. He did. You what?
I don't want.
Um, you want to do Harrisville?
Sure.
Okay. So then that leaves Marriott Sliderville and Ogden and Weaver County for the rest of us. I'll take Marriott Sliderville. Um, and then assign Jason and Greg Ogden and Weaver County. Did I miss any there?
There was an opportunity possibly for Box Elder County.
Oh, Box Elder. Maybe with the Weaver County one, we can incorporate.
Because they're, they are a neighbor.
Yep, that's true.
Maybe they would do something that would impact.
You know what? Can I switch? I'll do Weaver County and Box Elder County.
Oh, okay. I'll, then I'll do West Haven.
Okay.
She would prefer that.
Yeah.
You know that more than I'm better than anyone.
Um, and as far as counties, anyone's allowed to jump in too. Like Darren, a lot of ti, or not Darren, gosh, Brandon. Pleasant View might be not boring, but a little ish, so you might want to hook on to Box Elder because they are a neighbor too, so you might want to. I didn't mean that in a bad way, I just, so.
They're a bedroom, it's not you.
Right, right, exactly. There's not a lot going on. Okay, I will send out in an email what everyone's been assigned so you all know, but you are welcome to obviously attend other things, uh, other cities, but just follow them and report.
Send us an email to remind us. I just got so much going on that I need a reminder out there.
I will email.
You're not old enough to forget stuff yet, Rand.
Oh, I got, I just got a lot of stuff going on, so I.
Maybe plan about in a month, so maybe the end of June ish to report on a couple of things that you've found.
Okay.
Okay, in one of our work sessions, we can put some time to it. So we do upcoming, we do, the next work session, we'll be talking, we'll be back on. Gosh dang, um, we'll be back on. I want to go back to the M one stuff and start doing that, but we probably need to stop for a second and go back to our patio home ordinance.
Well, can I just, where are we exactly in the process for the landscaping in the C two zone?
That, I was under the impression and I, I'm sorry, it should have been included on this agenda when I sat down.
Shouldn't it be in the form of a resolution?
Yes, but well, I can send it to.
No, I thought we're, we're, we're amending, we're, we're changing the municipal code. So aren't those changes usually formal resolutions? That's what I thought.
So it needs to be re-rolled?
What we should have got back from Liam.
Well, I did not specify that to him. I just had him review.
Because basically we've approved it.
Okay.
So it needs to be forwarded to the city council, but they're going to want.
We have not approved it, so it still.
Resolution, okay.
Right, it still needs to come to our agenda to be approved to city council.
So he needs to draft a resolution.
Draft, yep.
Won't change what we look at.
So I will email, he's already reviewed it and said he was fine with it, so I'll email him to draft it into the resolution and it can be on our next agenda to move on to city council.
Has he given you any comment about the other change to the A one?
I didn't see any of that.
Because we had a conversation with him about that.
Have you submitted something to him?
Yes.
Yeah, we've, we've had a meeting with him.
Oh, then no, you need to follow up with him on that because I didn't, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming, I'm assuming if he doesn't have any heartburn about it, then that would take the form of a resolution too.
And if you follow up with him, have to be that.
Because we're imposing conditions in the A one residential zone that we're not imposing on. It's a conditional use in the A one and A one R is whatever. It's like there's an A one and A one. Yeah, I don't know, they're both As. Uh, but, but this conditional use applies to those two residential zones, but not the other. And if you look at the way the, our current ordinance is set up, it has conditional uses and permitted uses listed universally for all residential zones, so he has to do some restructuring a little bit.
Okay.
And, uh.
Well, maybe you two need to follow up with him.
Well, but we, we gave it to him. What, what do we do now?
Well, did you follow, what, he hasn't, he hasn't commented back, so you need to follow up with him and say, hey, have, did you have any comments on this?
But we don't have the title of Madam Chairman.
Well, are you, okay, then let's go backwards. Next time you all need to copy me on something that you send to Leah. Because I will follow through if I knew you sent it.
This is my precise reason why I mentioned this.
Okay, well, next time, copy me on the email and I will always follow this through. I didn't know we were to that point.
We had the conversation with him and I, from what I gathered, he had no problem with it. In fact, he actually made a suggestion for a couple of changes that we made.
Well, I can ask him.
I can follow up if you want. I'm carving you.
Yeah, please.
Okay, I will send him an email tomorrow.
I'm sorry, I just didn't know it got sent out, so I didn't bother following through for it.
Set down with you for.
Okay. Right, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Still has clout.
Okay, I'll follow up with both of those and the resolution, so you will see on June 8th meeting, you will see um, that at least the landscape one come through to move to city council.
Now, are we going to have a work meeting on the gates?
Yes, so that was, I need to figure out our timing on the patio home ordinance because it's either going to be on the patio to start drafting that up. Um, or the M one, but we also have a little conflict. We need to reassess the animal ordinance too. That has come back to us regarding roosters.
Oh, boy. Oh, man, we've been down that road.
Yeah, so that is also on our, which shouldn't take too long, but we also do need to push that and the city council asked a little bit of preference on that. Seriously, yes. Yes, that's exactly why it's coming up.
When you say the M two, I thought.
M one.
The M one, I thought what we decided is we were going to create a table with the M one and the C two both showing permitted and conditional uses.
Greg was in charge of the table.
Okay, but, so we're really working on the two simultaneously.
Yeah, really.
Which I think is the most efficient way.
The only thing is, is with the, oh, you mean C two and M one. I don't know on the timing of the patio home ordinance. I thought.
I'm just saying when he does it, we'll be, we'll be working on both.
Yes.
Both.
The M one and, yes, correct, and C two.
Is there anything else we have to review for the moderate income housing that's?
No, that was the only one that needs to be reviewed.
Timeline that we.
By the end of second quarter.
The end of the second quarter.
So we have a month left on that one. Yeah, that was the other one. So I feel like we need to prob, the work, next work session will probably be related to that, but.
You will give us a draft of what transpired from today?
Yes, I'm not.
Because I'm not so sure we're going to be changing a whole lot. You're just formalizing.
No, so is there anyone that wants to do the actual write-up of the language? I will update the bullet points for someone, but is there someone that wants to go after starting to draft it up? That feels comfortable enough on that? I don't feel comfortable enough and I don't have the time. Yeah, you have. Is there someone that wants to try or team up? Okay. Then just start to write a little bit of it up.
Send, send me your updated bullet points from today and you'll.
Yep. Okay, I appreciate that. And, because that's the one we do need to push, so we probably need to have the next work session about that.
And this is patio home, right?
Mm-hmm, so I'll send that over. Um, what else? I think that's it for now, but the animal ordinance really is, and I'm, I'm not sure how severe that is. The city council said it was something we needed to push forward, but are we pushing that even before patio home? Okay.
Now, have we, have we got directive from the city council as to what they want us to do?
Yes, they want us to readdress.
Feel the roosters are allowed.
They actually said more is better, more is better.
Oh, boy.
More roosters?
I, I think the conversation was in the animal ordinance that we remember, it restricted to one rooster. And then somehow when the or, animal ordinance got revised, the roosters got out. There's no word of rooster in there at all.
No, I re, I remember making the decision to eliminate roosters.
Oh, you do?
Because roosters make noise, hens don't in the morning. And that was the rationale.
You mean in the original one when there were, you couldn't have more than one rooster?
No, I, I, I remember deciding, I thought we decided we didn't want roosters because one rooster makes as much. The issue was noise.
Yes, and that's what our problem is, and I guess the problem is we don't even say in there, no roosters.
Whatever happened, we took out no roosters.
We just went for me.
When we redid the ordinance with the pace, when, when we took this on.
Oh.
When you allowed for more pygmy goats, you let the roosters out.
I never changed that. That got, that was a typo.
Yeah, seriously.
No, no, seriously, that was never changed. I've paid attention to.
And now it's not, cause.
To potbelly pigs and.
Yeah, don't worry, we're all caught up on the pygmy goats.
You gotta search the text and couldn't find the word rooster.
Oh, boy.
It was somehow removed, cause it used to be that you could, that there were no roosters.
I know that, I was involved in that, so.
And then when we revised it somehow.
And then we have, uh, people who are maybe, maybe not using it in the sporting event.
And have lots of them.
Oh, really?
Oh, boy.
So, so that one has to come at some point.
That's gonna take minimal amount of time.
Yeah.
I was not gonna take it, that's gonna take us about thirty seconds.
Well, we can. Do we wanna get through the patio home ordinance so that it's done by the end of the month?
Let's do the patio home thing first.
Well, but that's, that's a slam dunk, what's the decision? There was a typo, we didn't even.
Well, how about this? How about this, because you were, I know you don't want another assignment, but because you were forefront of the revision to the animal ordinance, why don't you do a little homework and see where it got chopped out, and see if it's as easy as just putting it back there?
There's not gonna be a blood trail. It was a typo somehow. Cause, cause I focused only on.
Pygmy goats.
No. I created three size animals. They had a, a small and a large, and then you had these intermediate ones, and you didn't know whether they were small or large. And they were inconsistently referred to, you know, I cleaned all that up, so it was pretty obvious what each animal was, but I didn't touch roosters.
And then we changed the formula.
It got out.
I'll look at it.
Okay, that would be awesome, and then maybe the end of June's work session, we can slot twenty minutes or something for it. And if we, we may have to have an additional work session for the patio home ordinance at some point in June, so that we can. I'll email Lindsay, I'm not sure what our exact deadline is. I don't know if we have to have it drafted by the end of the quarter.
Our target, let, let's put it this way.
Yeah.
Say your name.
I think our target is, cause in, you know, in our goals, we said we were gonna have this, this, and this done. Okay, I don't think they're going to suddenly throw us out if we've got it like ninety percent there, and we've got a couple of approvals to go. Does that make sense? Cause we don't have our report due until August first.
Okay.
I hope we don't get burned.
We won't get burned.
Okay.
Cause they made it pretty clear, it has to be done by the second quarter.
Well, that's what we said we'd be done by, so.
Set our own goal.
We set our own goal, and it was.
That's right, okay.
So maybe next work session, I will put, cause I won't be there, I'll put on there that, you know, for the first fifteen, twenty minutes, let's get back on the ord, the animal thing. Give us a refresh, and then go right into the patio home.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, okay, that's.
I, I think we'll be fine on our M I H report. You know, because we only have to show what we've done since we passed it in, what was it, February? And August first, so.
And we met, we met the first quarter deadline, which was to start the discussion.
Yes.
And so we met that, so now we, okay.
Yeah, I, I think we'll be fine, because they're not gonna expect a lot this first year, because it's a very condensed time, cause it's from when it was passed until August first. What could happen?
Okay, sorry, that was kind of a lot. Um, I think that's all I have for now.
Motion, we go home.
Motion by Brandon.
Second.
Second by Lou.
Took a long time.
Second by Lou, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. We're just, you died on me or something.
Did we miss, did we miss an item, like?
The first issue, but I was interested in how the planning commission worked, I've never, never been one. I do have a question, and not officially.
You can come up here.
The, uh, the C two zoning that's in there is only for the antenna part. The other part, you mentioned that it was gonna, you're doing something with it, the subdivision.
It will just stay A one.
Same as it was before.
Yeah.
Same zone. What he did is he subdivided it, took that small piece and re-zoned.
How did they build the antenna on it before it was zoned? How did they build the antenna there if it wasn't zoned properly to begin with? Okay.